Ms. Abby DiMolina.
Here.
Mr. Howard Matts.
Here.
Okay, and then I'm assuming Leslie's not in today. And then Ms. Megan Trudell is remote.
I'm here.
Okay, glad to feel, glad to hear you're doing better. Mr. Billy Saad.
Here.
And Ms. Catherine Mencero. Awesome, thank you. Okay, so we're gonna run through continuance really quickly. Of the public hearings, 21 Amelia Drive LLC, that'll be continued till February 10th. 6A Marble Way LLC, 8 and 10 Marble Way will be continued till February 10th. Habitat for Humanity in Nantucket, 5-way drive and 9-way drive will be continued till February 10th. And I believe that is all for now, so.
There's, there's one other for 75 Hooper Farm, that's being continued.
Oh.
Special permit.
The special permit is being continued, we're gonna go with the subdivision tonight.
Okay.
We didn't have it listed on there anyway, but we just wanted to make sure that's covered.
Okay, okay, awesome. So, can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
No moves.
Changes, so moved. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Nat?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Okay, John?
Aye.
Okay, agenda's approved. Is there any public comment tonight, not on tonight's agenda? Anyone online? Okay, I'm gonna move on. I'm assuming everyone had a chance to read the December 9 minutes, does anyone have any comments, edits, et cetera? Not hearing any? Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, Nat, on your motion?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
And John?
Aye.
And the chairs an aye, okay. Okay, so, we're going to do secondary dwelling and garage apartments, and we'll get to A and Rs, because there's a little bit of a glitch.
And Mr. Chair, I just have one quick statement on the secondary dwellings.
Go ahead.
I have to walk back the staff report a little bit, I had an initial conversation on Friday with, with the commissioner, and I had put that note in, and then just a further conversation with the commissioner after the weekend. It was decided that the board can't put that condition in, so I would move 44 Skyline up to, to your standard approval with 4 Hickory, 8 Second Way, and 18 William Street.
Okay.
Minus the added condition in the staff report.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I love saying that. Can we pull that out, just have a short discussion on that, please?
44 Skyline?
Yes.
Okay, we'll hold that one.
Thank you.
Okay, so, can I get a motion for approvals on secondary dwelling and garage apartments, other than 44 Skyline Drive?
No, the garage apartment will be separate, 24 Essex.
And 24 Essex as well.
We're pulling that one out?
Yep.
Yes.
I'm moved.
Can I get a second, please? Okay, is that Dave?
Yes.
Okay, Dave, on your motion?
I made a motion?
It was John's motion.
Oh, sorry, John, sorry. Sorry, sorry about that. Uh, John, on your motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
And the temporary chairs an aye. How you like that one, Dave?
I noticed you slid that one right in there.
Okay, so, do we allow discussion about 44 Skyline Drive and 24 Essex Road? Go ahead, Dave.
Um, yeah, on the Skyline Drive, I just, we've, we've received emails, um, I've had some phone calls, and I understand people's concerns here, I just, our purview on this, I, I think the public just needs to understand that our purview on it really is about access and access only, but like the calls and emails and concerns, I, I think most board members, if they knew what was going on out there, would share those concerns. And unfortunately, it seemed like the applicant might be just taking advantage of the situation. I don't think that there's anything we can do from where we sit on him moving buildings on there with little or no intent of them living there in the end, more as a storage thing. So I, I just, I kinda just wanted to air that out, because I know that there's a lot of, a lot of concerns, and unfortunately for us, our, our hands are tied. And I'm not exactly sure, I, I think that you need to refer probably your, your questions or concerns back to the building commissioner, I think is, is, is what I have, unless you have a better idea, Billy.
No, I think, I think that's, that's, that's good advice there.
Yeah, so that, that's the only reason I wanted to pull it out, and for any board members that are wondering what the hell I'm talking about, this is the second, this is the second building that will be moved onto this property. It's hard to tell whether the, the intent is really for it to be there or not, or it's just to move on to let it sit until it moves somewhere else, and I, and I personally think if it was my neighborhood and that was happening, I'd be upset, so I don't blame anyone that's, that's registered a complaint to, to me. But I just want people to understand that we're kind of powerless to it, this is more of a building department issue than, than a planning board issue.
Yeah, and, and Dave, to kind of piggyback onto that, I also feel that while I agree with some of the concerns, it's still outside of our purview at this moment, so, and I feel for them, but that's something that they just need to monitor step by step.
Yeah, and, and the reason I called that out, I didn't want anyone that's concerned about this to think that we're glossing over it, we're moving on, and we're approving something that shouldn't be approved, that the applicant has a right to do this, but we don't have a purview to, to change the outcome at this point, so.
Right.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Do you wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to, to approve this application.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, Dave, on your motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the chairs an aye. Okay, do you wanna talk about 24 Essex Road as well, Dave?
I, I can do that, Mr. Chair. So 24 Essex was the subject of enforcement, and the added condition to not allow a dwelling in the first floor of the basement just sort of reinforces the board's approval on the second floor garage apartment that was in the application.
Okay. All right.
Can I further expand on that condition?
Please.
So, the second dwelling on this property, there are a handful of properties in the subdivision that are allowed second dwellings by tertiary size standards, so if, you know, that, there is some zoning enforcement action taking place there, that's part one, but if this were to expand beyond that top floor, it would be in violation of that subdivision amendment, so the planning board actually isn't authorized to approve anything beyond 950 square feet at this particular location, without a public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
That was my question, she just answered it.
Okay.
If we had amended that since we changed the size, oh, that's good.
Okay. Okay. It's a pleasure. Is there any pleasure, are we good? So those, what you just said, Megan, is gonna be part of this decision, correct?
Yes, that's correct, and that's why, you know, there's a few extra conditions in there beyond, just to make it really clear to the applicant what the expectations are, so, you know, to put some extra language in there beyond what the standard conditions usually say.
Okay. So with those conditions, and the condition, the number, well, the only condition that's in the staff report, I'll make a motion to approve. Can I get a second?
Second.
Uh, so Nat, on your motion?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
And the chairs an aye. Okay. Oh my god, I'm getting close. All right, so A and Rs, we are going to approve all on the agenda except for 5, 7, and 9-way drive, 14 Somerset Road, and 12 Ipswich Street. They will require a special permit, so, can I get a motion on the A and Rs, please?
Motion to endorse.
Got a second?
Second.
Barry, thank you. Nat, on your motion?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the chairs an aye, thank you all. Okay, moving on. What's that?
Mr. Chair, sir?
Yes?
I, I just wanna make a comment on, on 2 Wama Squid, just.
I have Wama Squid.
We just went, we just voted on A and R, I just, I just wanna say what a breath of fresh air it was to see someone subdividing and not maximizing their subdivision on a piece of property, it's really nice to see, and we don't see it very often, so, just, just a shout out, much appreciated.
Okay. You all sat there?
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, just to, I apologize, I probably created confusion, because I, I added a 5 in the staff report, it is number 2 Wama Squid, not 25 Wama Squid, there, there actually is no address for 25.
Okay. All right. Okay, you ready? Yep, okay. So we are going to move on to, uh, what, where are we going, previous plans, we're gonna Mariner Way subdivision, and Mr. Ed Doherty, is he online?
No, I can go over this, we're holding a performance surety for some completion of infrastructure work in this subdivision, some things have been finalized, like the final Kodo paving, the curbing around the retention pond, they still have yet to complete the sidewalk, or I guess replace the sidewalk right in front of Union Street, and then plant the street trees, they obviously won't be able to plant the street trees until the spring, the intent is to put the brick down for the sidewalk, I believe in the coming weeks, so I would suggest releasing that performance surety bond until the, and holding the check in the office until the sidewalk can be inspected.
Okay, thank you, Megan.
Less withholding the amount for the street trees, I don't have the specific amount, but I think it's in the realm of $10,000, $12,000. I, I have the estimates in my files back at the office.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir. Megan, do we have, does Drew and, um, the tree guy, what's his name? Gary?
Cook.
Dale?
Oh, Dale.
Do they, are they aware of all this in this little thing here?
So, no, the street trees, well, all of this is part of the subdivision.
This on Mariner?
That was from years, yeah, years ago, so the street trees are the, gonna be located on the interior roadway, Mariner Way.
Okay.
And then the sidewalk, I'm not sure if it's within the roadway layout, but it's been on the plans all along, it's just a simple, they'll change.
Okay, so there's nothing, this is new stuff, that isn't finished, quite finished yet?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you. Okay, can I get a?
I'll make a motion at this point that we authorize staff to redo the partial release and withhold funds for both the sidewalks and the street trees, as denoted.
Yeah, Barry, can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Nat, okay, Barry, on your motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
And the chair, temporary chair, is an aye.
Acting chair.
Yes, I'm in.
That sounds too permanent, Barry.
It's a running joke with David, I'm sorry, keep changing the words around, like consultants. Um, okay, moving on to Nantucket Golf Course Incorporated, 250 Milestone Road, this is a minor modification to an existing entrance pergola, and Mr. Leo Azadorin, are you present?
I don't see Leo on, and I, I, oh, there he is.
Leo, do you wanna go ahead, please?
I'm promoting him.
Oh, sorry.
Here, I'm just gonna allow, oh, no, there he goes.
This is a good little thing. Surprise it's not coming now.
How's that, can you hear me now?
Yes, please proceed.
All right, the application before you is there's an existing pergola, which is at the entrance to the clubhouse, as you're pointing out on your screen, and they're gonna revise that to be a little bit larger, it's gonna basically, right now, the footprint or the area of it is about 91 square feet, and it's gonna be bumped up to 250 square feet, but it's also gonna have a roof on it, I understand that lots of times during inclement weather, people have to wait way back at the clubhouse on the porch, and that's being placed there to accommodate members and people coming and going, if it is raining or, or whatever, and that's the whole purpose of it, is just to provide covering for anybody waiting for a vehicle or to be picked up.
Thank you, Leo. Commissioners, have any comments? Okay, open up the public, anyone have any comments online?
It's not a public hearing.
Not a public hearing, sorry.
It isn't?
Okay, oh, that's right, sorry, previous plan. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion at this point that we approve the application submitted with the findings and conditions, as denoted.
Okay, second.
Second.
Nat, thank you. Barry, on your motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the chairs an aye. Okay, moving on to On Island Center, 30 and 34 Sparks Ave, clarification.
I can probably handle this, maybe with a little bit of Megan's help, but, um, the owner of the property had reached out to us to get clarification on the, on the prior special permit that was issued for 30 and 34 Sparks, and I included a copy of the decision in the, in the packet for you all, and they were, they were basically looking to see, there was a restriction in condition 6.1, and they were looking for clarification on whether that applied to 30 Sparks or 34 Sparks.
Okay.
So, if I can just elaborate on that, the MCD permitted 30, which is the gas station, and 34, which is the Cumberland Farms building, I'm not reversing that, am I?
That, that's reversed, I believe. 30 is Cumberland Farms.
Or 34, no, 30, which one does the restriction go with, the restriction goes with 34, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so the 34 is the gas station, 30 then is Cumberland Farms, in any event, throughout the decision, it, it contemplates adding residential units, and it's only at the end that it ties those units specific to employee housing of the gas station, so in the event they were to be conveyed out of common control ownership, they'd wanna clarify who, who has to be responsible for the employee housing occupancy, and that lies with 34, so just seeking a clarification, and our recommendation is to authorize staff to provide that just through a letter to, to the owner.
Thank you, staff, for clarification. Commissioner, any comments? No. Okay, make a motion? Make a motion to authorize staff to file a clarification letter for the decision on 34 versus 30? Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, John. Nat, on your motion?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
And the chair, acting chair is an aye. Okay, on to public hearings. 21 is continued. Okay, moving on to Town Nantucket Affordable Housing Trust Fund, 14 Somerset Road, and this is being presented by Mr. Dan Malloy, Dan?
He's, he's getting moved over right now.
Perfect.
Afternoon, Dan Malloy for the applicant.
Hello, Dan.
Afternoon, so, Town of Nantucket Affordable Housing Trust, 14 Somerset Road, looking to do a two-lot A and R plan, starting off with a covenant special permit application. If anyone's familiar with the properties, an existing dwelling there and garage is currently used for town employee housing, and at the bottom, so creating two lots, 4A would contain the existing house, that's remain intact as it is, 4B would be the new vacant lot, which would be the covenant lot. As part of the application, we're asking for a few waivers to go with this, there was one, one typo in the application, I'll clarify as well. So we're looking for relief in terms of the property line setback between the two lots, 4A and 4B, that's the only property line relief we're looking for, to waive it down to five feet. The application contained a request for all the property lines, and that was an error, so it's only the adjoining property line. And we're asking the board to grant relief to allow lot 4B to have its own driveway, instead of a shared driveway between the two lots, with the way the property is configured now, the existing driveway from 4A is on the complete opposite side of the property. And the third waiver, which is also consistent with what the board's granted, is to ask that the ground cover be spread out entirely across the two lots, I expect the remaining ground cover will likely go entirely to lot 4B, but we'd just like to have some flexibility in case that changes. And that's the application.
Thank you, Mr. Malloy. Commissioners, have any comments, thoughts?
So, just, I'm sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, so just the interior lot line is the waiver, correct? Just to be completely clear on that, Dan.
That's correct, just between lots 4A and 4B.
Perfect.
Hey, Dave, if you can turn up your volume, it'd be great, or if that is sizing, go.
Feeling like Arthur. You hear me better now?
A little bit, but thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, we'll open up the public, any public comments, or any online?
I'm not seeing any hands on.
All right, could someone make a motion to close the public comment?
Sorry, we did get a hand up. Whitney Gifford has his hand up.
Okay, welcome, Whitney.
Please unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Whitney.
Perfect, I'm representing the trustees of both the Somerset Nominee Trust, as well as the Blackberry Nominee Trust, who were initially concerned with the application and the property line setbacks being all the way around. Just by way of reintroduction, the property in question was the property of the late Tom Giffen, the family is the movers behind the subdivision, immediately behind it, known as Bittersweet Lane, and the board members will recall that they took some pains to try and keep a rural, non-dense approach to that subdivision, and indeed left a fair amount of development on the table. Not wanting to oppose Nantucket housing in any way, particularly affordable housing, they were concerned that the application, as they first perceived it, was going to be very dense and had the, you know, potential to be on top of both the Somerset Nominee Trust lots and the roadway at Bittersweet. Thanks to the comments made by staff, and the clarity that Mr. Malloy has just provided, I think they are okay with the internal lot line waiver request, would just like to make sure that the location of the driveway out to Somerset not interfere, obviously with the turning radius or any of the infrastructure that's currently in Somerset at the intersection of Bittersweet.
Thank you, Whip. Anyone else?
No other answers.
Okay. Commissioners, have any comments on that, or any suggestions, thoughts?
No.
Yep, okay. All right, if there's no other comments, I guess we'll close the public comment.
Motion to close the public hearing, sir.
Thank you, Barry.
Second.
Thank you, Nat. Barry, on your motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the chairs an aye, okay, what say you, commissioners?
I'll make a motion at this point that we approve the application with the findings and conditions that were submitted from staff.
Second. Thank you, Barry and Nat, Nat, Barry, on your motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the chairs an aye, okay, thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Dan, don't go anywhere.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion at this point that we approve the A and R that was submitted in, in conjunction with this application.
Second. Thank you. Barry, on your motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the chair is an aye, okay, thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna move on to Michelle and Lisa Gettr, and Ann Becker, sorry, Michael, and Lisa Gettr, and Ann Becker at 12 Ipswich Street, and yep, being represented by Dan Malloy.
Afternoon again, Dan Malloy for the applicant, so again, another, another special permit request for a covenant lot, this is 12 Ipswich Street out in Tom Nevers, so we're looking to get approval for two lots, lot one being the market rate, lot two being the covenant lot. The, one of the property owners, the Getters, are planning on continuing to stay at lot two with the eventual sale of lot one. As part of the special permit request, there's a couple of waivers attached to this one, a couple of requests, I should say, one is to allow that we have two driveways, the property as it currently stands already has two driveways, just like to get that recognized as part of the special permit. And would also ask, again, that the ground cover allowance be spread across the two lots in some manner, however the special permit ends up dictating it, but that one lot not be set at a certain percentage, as long as those total lots combined meet the requirements. This is an LUG3 zone, it's an overall 160,000 square feet, so they had extra lot area to play with in the start, so the, for covenants, it's a pretty big lot, so there's lots of room here. That's the application, there's nothing else special about this, there's no other environmental constraints, nothing we have to deal with.
Okay, thank you, Dan Malloy. Commissioners, any comments? Okay, any public comments? Amazing.
Yeah, we have, Kathy Baird has her hand raised, and Kathy, please unmute.
Good afternoon, these, this is my neighborhood, and I just think this is, I'm supporting it, I think it's a, a great, a great use of the, of the property, and to open it up to year-round residents to own a home there, is, it is a great year-round neighborhood, so I think this is a great idea, and I, I hope you can approve it, thank you.
Okay, thank you for Kathy Baird, hello, Campbell, good evening.
Campbell Sutton, and I just had a quick question, and I was just sort of wondering, which, which is the covenant lot? I was thinking, it was lot two.
It is lot two, yes.
And, and the property owners are staying in that one?
Yeah.
And the market rate is lot one, okay, so, when the two curb cuts are approved, are they being approved in the same location, or does lot one have the opportunity to move it around based on the sale of that lot?
Dan, you wanna answer that, just for the record?
Well, I guess I'll say that's a good question, so right now, there are no development plans for lot one, beyond what you're seeing, it's existing.
Okay.
It's nothing to say that a buyer of lot one may wanna move a driveway, so. It's nothing to say that a buyer of lot one may want to move a driveway, so. I'm not sure we've come across this specific question, it would require it to come back before the board or not? Or if one driveway for that lot is allowed regardless of where it is?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Megan or Billy, is this, I think this is a housekeeping issue. It probably didn't have a second curb cut permit back then, I'm assuming.
Well, that's correct. I couldn't find a site, a special for the second curb cut previously.
Sort of like codify what's there, because there was, before 1998, or whatever the year was.
Right, right. Well, I just know sometimes these streets are in really rough shape.
Well, I mean, if you, you were around.
So they get a track, you know, they get a.
You were up here when this all started, before COVID. This, what they're doing is.
I'm not opposed in any way.
Have an hour-long conversation about this. This is, they're giving up a lot, because we don't have an option for them.
Yeah.
And so, we should be genuflecting of what they're doing, I can tell you that.
I, I am, just asking a question.
This is like almost a five-eighth lot. Yeah, it's impressive. So, anyway. Thank you, Campbell. Anyone else? Okay, got a motion to close? Motion to close. Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Barry. Nat, on your motion?
Oh, aye.
Barry?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the chair is an aye. Okay, on the merits, everyone. Motion to approve with all the findings and conditions. Okay, gonna get a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Barry. Nat, on your motion?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
Thank you, Dave.
Aye.
Thank you, John.
Aye.
And the chair is an aye. Thank you very much, everyone. Okay, on to the A and R. Motion to endorse the A and R plan for 12 Ipswich.
Second.
Okay. Nat, on your motion?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
And John?
Aye.
And the acting chair is an aye. Okay. We are, thank you, Dan. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Five and Nine Way Drive are being continued, so we are jumping on to John P. Murray, 73 and 75 Fairgrounds Road. Dan Malloy is representing, but I just want to let everyone know that a legal opinion was weighed in and is included in our packet. So if anyone had any questions or was watching last meeting, it is in there, so please move on to that. Commissioner, or Dan, go ahead and make a presentation, sorry.
I don't have a lot of new information. At the last hearing, the question was laid out to get the legal opinion on the rear lot, get if this were to be approved. At the last meeting, probably two or three meetings ago, I forget which one it was, we reviewed what could be, I'll say could be, because it's not there, but could be a potential rear lot subdivision layout. So at the last meeting, the board expressed concern about the rear lot being approvable if this were approved. And I think you've got the legal opinion that straightens that question out. So where we are now is looking to get through the approval required process. I know there's concerns with density and possibly what it might look like. But I don't want to get into the rear lot too much, because it's not officially in front of you yet. But what I would say is if the rear lot is allowed, if we get through this part with this approval, and then we come back to you with a special permit, at that point, we can change the rear lot configuration around. I think we can have a lot deeper conversation on it, and you can condition it in a way that you cannot condition an approval required. So I, I think what I'd look for the board to consider is approving the request in front of you for the approval required, so that we can move forward with the rear lot special permit, at which time, we have a lot more, a lot more discussion on conditions and changes to it.
Yeah, so, and one of the things you did mention to me was that you are going to, you know, if you get approval tonight, is sit down with your client and kind of express some of our concerns and, and work on this plan for the rear lot, correct?
That, that's correct. We plan on going back to revisit it, see if we can reshape some things and, and change how it looks. But I, I just didn't want to present the board with different ideas and options for something you don't have in front of you yet.
No, I understand. Okay. Commissioners, have any comments?
Sir.
Okay. Hearing none of us, any from the public? Emily Molden, please come on down. Good evening, Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did have a couple of questions, but I, before I do, I feel as though I'm remembering that you might have closed the public hearing on this last time before asking for the legal opinion.
No, not to interrupt you, but sorry, but I don't think we did because of your legal opinion, so we left it open just for that extent.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Okay, well, then I guess, one of the questions I have, and I apologize, I intended to follow up with staff on this beforehand, but I did submit a, another letter with a legal opinion at the end of November, that I had, and I had asked if that could have been provided to Town Council as well. I sort of assumed that it wasn't, and that it wasn't in the packet, because I thought maybe a public hearing had been closed. That really was with regards to the rear lot and that provision. But in light of the fact that that hasn't been included, and no one has seen it, I guess I would ask if they do come back with a special permit request for the rear lot, at that time, I presume I could provide that legal opinion again and discuss it more specifically?
Do you mind if I go to Megan, because she did have direct communication with Town Council, or did you, Billy? Megan, do you mind answering Emma's question?
No, that's fine. I'm so sorry, Emily, I don't, I must have missed it, including it in the packet. I know it definitely was not shared with Town Council. Town Council reviewed just the scope of what the board requested of them, so generally, we wouldn't include outside information for that. But I would say absolutely, if, if the board is inclined to approve this request to serve as the proof plan for a rear lot, and it comes back as a rear lot special permit, you can certainly, you know, submit that as part of the packet for that hearing.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. That's definitely helpful. So then I think I'll just reserve those comments at that time. It seems like they probably would be more appropriate for then. And then, I would just ask the board, again, based on the comments I've made previously, to really consider the number of waivers that are being requested here, and that you all consider this proposal on its own merits as a request for subdivision approval, including the concerns that we've raised about approving a subdivision that shows a lot line cutting directly through an existing structure, and the implications around zoning setbacks, and just suggest that this goes beyond what I believe I typically would see the planning board approve for a subdivision proposal. So I'd just ask you to reconsider those comments again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Emily. Anyone else in the public? Yep, go ahead.
And I don't even know if this is a question as much as it's a statement. My concern is this, is that if we approve this, and then we look to agree with the applicant on something for the rear lot, we put ourselves in a bad situation, because now we've approved, an approval required subdivision, yet if we are not in favor of the rear lot that comes from it, he's got a, he's got a subdivision approved by us. So I, I guess my concern is, is if we do approve this, are we just painting ourselves into a corner?
Could I comment on that?
A good person to answer that one. Yes, Megan. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. So what, what we've done, or what you all have done in, as far as conditions are concerned for similar types of applications in the recent past, is you throw a condition in there that this is intended to be converted to a rear lot subdivision, you know, prior to the conveyance of any of the property out of common ownership. If they decide not to pursue that path, it's gonna have to come back to the planning board for all sorts of engineering review, and it may, you know, it reopens the public hearing for the subdivision, essentially.
You're right, Dave.
I, I'm just, I'm just, I'm trying to wrap my head around it. So, thank you. Looks like Dan has a comment.
Just a quick follow-up, I was gonna reiterate everything Megan just said. And also, I can add to that. Obviously, it's their intent to do a rear lot subdivision, and I understand your concern if they decide not to. But not only will we have to come back before the planning board to, to complete anything else that has to plan, has to be done, but also, the definitive plan, as it's currently shown, would be, to pursue this would be an entirely different project for the owner, because now we're talking about taking down a house, which he intends to live in and preserve. But it's a completely different project from their perspective as well. So it would require a much different effort on all of our parts if they, if this comes back to you.
Yeah, because this would create a non-conformity, immediately.
Yeah, a lot of it.
Plan, as far as that goes. Okay. Anyone else in the public?
No more hands raised online.
Commissioner, do you have any comments, or do you want to close the public comment? What do you want to do?
Seems problematic for everyone.
I mean, we know what the, the ultimate plan is gonna look like for the most part. Dan, can you just answer me one question, that exclusive area thing? Where does that? What, what, does that give ground cover to one lot, or? Or a specific lot, or the whole entire place? How, how is that configured?
So, right in the, so right in the front of the property, there's a, another property in front of us with a new house, 71 Fairgrounds Road. On that property, right where you're pointing, is an exclusive use area. So what that does is to the benefit of the existing house above it, on what's now proposed to be lot one.
Okay.
All that does is prevent the owner of 71 from building within that exclusive use area.
Got it.
All the zoning benefit stays with 71.
Okay, so that's an unbuildable, un, it can't have a road or a drive, you know, or they can't have a driveway access in it?
They might be able to have, actually, no, it's exclusive use, they can't do anything other than, other than maintain it as it stands. No buildings, no parking, no landscaping of their own. It's, it's owned by 71, but to the benefit of staying as it is to lot one.
But the ground cover from that, well, the, the, you know, the, the square footage applies to lot one's ground cover, correct?
It does not, no. The exclusive use area stays with 71. So 71 owns it and gets all zoning benefit from it.
Okay. Yeah, all right.
Within the black line is as it would look.
Okay. I understand, but I just, when he said lot one, I thought.
Think of it like a view easement that you see across, somebody has across someone else's property. It restricts what they can do there, but they still own it.
Okay. I think that needs, you know, like a, a little bit of an explanation in this. Because it is something, I don't think we've ever seen anything like that before, that I can remember.
I think it helps out this lot.
It does. Okay. I'll make a motion to close.
Just before you do that.
Okay.
Thank you. I, I just want to ask one quick question through either Megan or through Billy. Have we approved any of these beforehand on this type of conditional status, and roughly, if so, how many?
We have.
We have, okay.
I, I'd have to go through files to, you know, but at least a full hand count in the past probably two years, if not more.
All right, that, that's, that's fair game. I'm not expecting the exact number, you know, when I put you on the spot like that. But it's, it's fair to say that the board has done a few of these beforehand with the same, with the same concept.
Yes.
We're dealing with. Okay, great. I, I just think that's important, that, you know, that we have set a precedent beforehand under which to, to do these kinds of things. That's it. So I think Mr. Lowell was gonna try to close the public hearing then.
Yes, I'll make that motion to close.
And I'll second that.
Thank you, Barry. Nat, on your motion?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
And John?
Aye.
Okay, on the merits. I'll make a motion to approve with the findings and the conditions.
And I'll second that.
Is that Barry?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, Nat, on your motion?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
Dave?
No.
John? Okay, and the chair is a no. So that passes three to two. Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to 6A Marble Way LLC, 8 and 10 Marble Way.
That's continued.
Huh? Yeah, there's a couple of them. Oh, sorry, my God, I, sorry.
Did we vote on those in the beginning, on the continuations?
We voted to change the agenda, yes, yes.
You know what, let's, let's just do it for, I'm not clear on that. Let's just do it in case we haven't done it.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to continue 6A Marble Way, 8 and 10 portion of till the.
February 10th. February 10th. But in case we didn't, you might as well do all of them, that were at the front, because we had 5 and 9 Way Drive.
Those we did.
You definitely did.
Yeah, but we.
You guys did make a motion to continue.
I, I thought you did.
Oh, sorry, my bad. All right, just this one. No, we should do them all.
Let's just, I, I would just encourage, let's do them all. We're not clear. That way it's done, and it doesn't come back to haunt us.
8 and 10 Marble Way, 5 and 9 Way Drive, continue to February 10th.
Okay. Okay, I'll make that my motion then. Okay, the second?
And I'll second it, please.
Okay, thank you. Nat, on your motion? Barry?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the chair is an aye. I apologize for that. Okay, moving on to 20 Shell Street. Helen Mandel Trust at 20 Shell Street, and this is Ms. Jessie Brusher.
Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Sorry.
All good.
Computer issues, working from home. So it's Jessie Brusher for the applicant. The last meeting, there was some concern from the board and from the neighbors about the access for the property at 20 Shell coming in off of the, what is, I think Cottage Court there. And so we revised the plan, which was submitted to widen the, the sort of the area to come in, to, to create more room for, and to lessen the risk of backing out and hitting the neighbor's property, which is certainly a legitimate concern. The only other suggestion or idea that I had, and I had, I had emailed an incredibly rough sketch plan to staff, that was just because it was something I thought of yesterday morning, was, or sorry, on Friday morning, was a possible sort of indented parallel spot at 20 that would be, you know, roughly nine by 20, that would be on Shell Street. But it would be sort of, it would be parallel, so it wouldn't, no one's backing in or, you know, or driving out of Shell or onto Shell from the, from 20 Shell Street, but it would be parallel and just sort of indented into the property. Um, and that, and I think that, um, is, uh, I think makes, makes the neighbors happier. Um, I'm not sure if that's, if that's a possibility as far as the board is concerned. So that was, um, the only other idea I had. Um, but I'm, I'm happy to answer questions or, um, if the board has any further comments.
I was walking around. Thank you very much, Ms. Brescher. Okay, uh, Commissioners' comments? Thoughts? Yep, Mr. Chair, Jesse, are you there?
Yes.
Hi. Oh, Jesse. I, I, I went out there and parked by the comfort station, little street thing.
Mm-hmm.
And walked through there. I'm very familiar with this property, not that that makes a difference, but. I know exactly what you're saying. And I actually. One of the handful of times I went against staff on one of these down on Bank Street, Beach Street, whatever it's called down there. And got them to put one that you're asking for, but. It worked perfect on that street because there's like four of them, three or four of them.
Mm-hmm.
This, the idea you have is. I, I just think it would end up being. One of these spots that no one knows how to get the car in it. Okay?
Yeah, it was, it was a stab in the dark, I thought.
It's a nice idea, but.
Throw it out there.
There's too much vegetation on the, on number twenty-two.
Okay.
In my opinion, to make that work, so. Um, so the, the little nine by twenty thing. Is, you're widening the Cottage Court thing a little bit? To make it, I mean, they've been using this for both those houses for years as like a stack parking.
Correct.
Okay, for like, since probably before. Sconset stopped their ban on cars in nineteen, nineteen, I think, so. So, uh, the picture of those guys with the sign, so. I think that if they drive in. And drive into that space, as long as they back out towards the rear house and drive out. I mean, I know we can't tell people how to drive, but that's the intent of what this diagram is showing.
Yes.
That works. I mean. If they widen out the Cottage Court thing. On their property side, obviously, cuz the other side has a fence and there's no place to really widen it. The other house is right up against the, the driveway.
Correct.
Um. I mean, that would be very helpful to kind of slice off a little piece there on the corner. Make it easier for. You know. Mi- multi-variable skilled drivers to use, right? But they gotta find a way, they gotta back out, uh, back, uh, out into, you know, to the rear and then drive right out, normal.
Correct. So that, that.
It's a lot better than trying to, in my opinion, that's a lot better than trying to back in from Shell Street, especially in the summer. Cuz it's hard to do. So. It's just one of those, not a perfect situation. I think this idea is probably the best one, even though it's not perfect. So. What is the reason? They just don't wanna stack anymore or sell a property and somebody doesn't like it or what?
Y- yeah, I mean, the, so, right, the, the, there. I have to sell one of the properties in order to come up with money. To adequately cover the expenses of the beneficiaries of the trust.
Yep.
Um, so, uh, and one of the beneficiaries of the trust currently still lives in the back house that is at, that is eighteen. Um, so I can't, I can't sell that one. Uh, so I have to sell the front in order to come up with money to pay for everybody. Um, and again, they've used it for decades and stacked, but there, no one's supposed to be parking in Cottage Court. I mean.
I know, but, yeah.
You know, it's, it's not a, it's a, not a driveway, it's, uh, you know, a way. And, uh, especially now that there, these properties will be in separate ownership. It's no longer feasible to have someone, you know, knock on the door and say, hey, can you move the car cuz they're stacked? Um, so we've gotta find a way for them to be able to park.
Jesse, was, was this a forty-one eighty-one L?
Yes.
That, that makes sense then.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it was existing though.
No, that's, yeah, no, but still.
Yeah.
It makes it very confining.
Now, now Jesse, can I just ask one more question? Dave, you all set?
I'm good, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
That, those dotted lines in the back?
Yes.
What are we doing back there? Cuz there isn't any, anything there. Are we knocking down that fence and driving straight through?
Well.
At some point.
We had to, we have to show the ability to do that as a practical matter. I don't believe that the, the, the beneficiary who's living in the back house at the moment is actually gonna drive a car back there. Um, it would be disruptive of his, what is his quote-unquote front lawn at the moment.
Yeah.
But as a, legally speaking, I need to be able to provide him with a way to, to get back there. Um, so that's what's shown on there. And again, we sketched it so that there is a way for him to pull in, park. Um, and then be able to back out or, you know, turn around on his property and, and drive back out facing forward. Um, so we just showed that there is space to accommodate. That on the rear portion of the lot.
So. And one last sort of, I don't know. Alright, so that little driveway access behind the comfort station, I'm sure you've driven in there before, right?
Yes.
That is like the community parking. I mean, that's where I go. When I need to go to one of those houses, I just go back there and walk through the properties. Like, I'll bet your money that there's some kind of crazy. Agreement that allows multiple property owners to use that space back there. So I'll venture that this will stay the way it is, except for the new thing that you're gonna do. And that rear house is gonna end up probably using that other access.
That, again, that, I, I can't guarantee that, but that's my guess as well, that, that, that the beneficiary that lives back there is likely gonna park somewhere else in Sconset and walk down, walk himself to Cottage Court to get to his house. But again, I, you know, I can't, I can't guarantee that that's what's going to happen.
Probably what already is happening, so. Okay. This is an unusual one, but this kind of stuff. I mean, it happens in town too.
Yeah, and I, when, when our last meeting. I kind of figured that that fifteen-foot separation from Shell Street to the beginning of that parking of the nine by twenty would not be there, that fifteen, that radius would be right coming off of Shell Street. And the car would be hitting behind the fence and bring it up. I, I understand what she's trying to do, but I feel like there's a safety thing and I think. Um, the other thing you have to remember is Cottage Court, as you go from the house down to Shell Street, gets wider. So I think it's gonna be more advantageous for someone pulling out. So I, yeah, I, yeah, I think that's where I would wanna leave.
Again, I'm, if, if that is the pleasure of the board, I'm happy to shift it or to, or to widen it and have it start closer to Shell. I guess I was trying to be wary of not wanting it to be too close to Shell cuz of the twenty-five foot. You know, in, in the bylaw, they're like to be twenty-five feet away from an intersection, so I was trying to keep it. A reasonable distance away from the intersection, but I'm, I'm happy to, to slide it forward.
I think it should be slid forward to.
That helps.
Yeah, yeah, I think it should be slid forward to, um. Jesse.
Yeah, again, but that's, if, if that's the pleasure of the board, I'm, I'm happy to, to slide it. As for. I don't wanna coming in off of Shell, so, um, you know, but it can have the curve. Um, come as close to, as close to Shell as, you know, as possible and widen it.
Yeah, and I, I think the other thing is then you have private, then you have the car, and then you have a little yard that's usable. I think that's a better design. And I think also cars traveling down Shell Street aren't as, um. You know, nervous of someone pulling in and out of that little space. I think it gives them a little bit of time, but, um, uh, Barry, John, Dave, do you have any comments?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Is there anyone else online or anyone? In public comment? These things can be really difficult.
Uh, Nan Gustafson has her hand up.
Okay.
And Nan, please unmute to talk.
Hello, can you hear me?
Good evening, Anne. How are you?
Um, so. We still just do have a little bit of concern about, um, sorry, I meant sixteen Shell Street. And, um, so adjacent to the property that we're talking about, um. And. We, we still have some concern about the proximity to our house, Castle Dan Box, and making the turn in this location. Um, but I think. If you widen it. Like you had just suggested, perhaps it ends up being a little bit easier to turn into that parking. Um. And then the other question I would have would be to do with, there is a fence currently there. I would, would they be having to get rid of the fence in order to do this driveway and make the, or the parking space and make the turn off of Shell Street? Into that parking space would be the other question I would have.
Uh, Nan, my thought was to keep the fence there, which would help with the architecture of the, and the streetscape. And, but taking the nine by twenty space that you see, um, that was overall, you know, twenty-five feet long and bring that down. Um. Closer to Shell Street, and so you would have a fence and a private buffer. So really, as you're driving by, i- it would seem the same as coming down Shell Street. But the beauty of this parking, uh, space that she's created is, is the arc that she has right now closest to the house, existing dwelling. And I think that will allow any driver to, to pull out and not, um, come close to your house. So, you know, generally it's twenty feet, but have twenty-five feet plus maybe another twelve to thirteen feet in Cottage Court. That, that's a very wide space, uh, for Sconset, um, and access to pull in and out. So I, I think that by pulling it down to the street alleviates most, if not all, the concerns that you should have or anyone of the neighbors should have.
I just am wondering for clarification, when you're. Um, if you pull it down towards Shell Street, but then you still have the fence where it is along Cottage Court, how? How would the car? Turn into that parking space if the fence runs along Cottage Court?
So is it? One, um, you know, pull in and then either back into the space and then they can pull out, very simple? Or, um, that would be the kind of the suggestion I would have is the easiest thing to kind of turn. It's gonna be probably a three-point turn, but it's something they're gonna be able to do. So. And, you know, I mean, a lot of these cars on Sconset, most people don't have massive Suburbans, they are smaller cars, so. And I think that that arc that is created closest to the house, that's gonna help someone be able to swing into that space.
Yes, and then, um, when you had talked about potentially widening Cottage Court. Again, I still am concerned about the fence that goes along Cottage Court, and I agree, I, I like the aesthetics and, um. It looks good with the fence there. I just wonder how the car. Cottage Court is pretty narrow, especially with the fence going along. The side, if they move the fence. Back. Towards their property further, I, I'm just not.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, if it was me, I would personally would pull into Cottage Court, drive in and back into my space and then pull out and pull onto Shell Street. Um, so that would be the quickest and easiest and because legally you can't pull out of a parking space into a public way, so. That's illegal, so I think going onto Cottage Court and then pulling into your parking space in the front yard would be the, the safest. Um. Parking space and access and egress, uh, for this lot and the neighbors and anyone traveling by it.
May I answer a question? It's, it's Jesse.
Yes.
And so there, there's a little piece of the fence that, um, that juts into Cottage Court. Um.
Yes.
And again, I'm happy to pull, obviously we can pull that back. It, it shouldn't be in Cottage Court. It should be along the property line anyway, so certainly that can be pulled back. Um, and, you know, so that the, the fence would, would still run along Shell. Um, and the portion that is certainly within the layout of Cottage Court should be tightened up and pulled back to the, to at least the property line. Again, to enable, um, a better turning radius to get into that parking spot, and we can certainly shift the, the parking. Um, spot. Closer to Shell. I'm not sure if the board has a sense of how far off of Shell they'd like it to be. Um, you know, five, seven feet, something like that, so you've got a little, you know, you've got a way to come in and then, and then turn. Um, but again, I'm happy to pull it as tight as possible to Shell. Um, and then obviously we would adjust the fencing so that it is located solely with on, within our property. Um, as opposed to encroaching onto Cottage Court the way it does now.
Yep.
If that helps.
Jesse, that, that does help. Thank you very much.
Yeah, certainly.
Yeah, that's perfect. Okay. I mean.
I don't have any other comments.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Nan.
Thank you.
Okay. Close the public?
Yeah, I mean.
Mr. Chair. Mike Burns has his hands up.
Who?
Mike Burns.
Mr. Chair, just to, and it's mostly to, uh, uh, Jesse Brescher, if that's, uh, alright, uh, there, the, the vegetation there, I mean, it's, if you're leaving, if you're backing into that parking space and leaving, I'm looking at the vegetation and things there, it might be a little difficult to look behind you to enter Shell Street, so just maybe be conscious about how high that vegetation gets, so make sure you're not have, creating a visual obstruction to make it, you know, kind of easy to navigate out of that space and into Shell Street. That would be, that was my only comment. Thank you.
Uh, certainly, and, and if, if the board wants to add a condition that it, something be limited to the three feet, or I don't, I forget what the standard. Um. Height is, but certainly that's, that's acceptable as well, that maybe. The goal is to be able to get someone in and out of there safely, and, and so I'm not trying to create a wall of private. Um, if it, if that, certainly if that causes a safety issue.
Yeah, the. The key thing here, Jesse, is to, as Joe said, driving in from Shell. From, presents no safety issue. Backing in to the parking space, to the future space. From. Cottage Court, which I thought was off Orange Street all my life. Um, didn't know there was two. And that, and then driving back out is the, that is the best answer. Um. You know, I mean, there's no perfect thing. I mean, the next-door neighbors. Got a similar situation, except they have a place that they can jiggle around and turn around and come back out. These kinds of things are existing forever and no one says anything, and then we wanna, somebody comes along, you know, and wants to try to change something, and I'm sure that there are a lot of things that happen now in its existing condition that's probably worse than what might happen later, so. You know, not everybody can back up, and I say that a lot, it is true. And I think that this particular improvement does create it to be a little easier for, you know. Everybody to, that uses it to be able to back into that space and not have to back out to Shell Street. Which is the most important thing of all this.
Hmm.
How wide is Cottage Court, Jesse? What is the layout? Like twenty feet? I mean, is it variable width? I mean, what are we talking about?
Well, I mean, sort of, I mean, there's a point between the two existing buildings where it's roughly nine point nine feet.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, it's, it's wider at the intersection with Shell, but.
So that widening part is in the layout. So somebody was thinking whenever this was done. That's interesting. I thought that might be part of your improvement plan, but that's the actual. Layout and of, of, of what Cottage Court looks like.
Yeah.
I believe so.
That's amazing, okay.
It's, it's an old one.
Well, that's good, though, that it's wider there because that's where it needs to be.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, um, so I'm.
Is there anyone else in the public?
Not in the public, Barry has his.
Alright, um, Director?
Thank you, I appreciate it. Um, you know, I'm a little concerned with the application because. It really, this is so tight in here and there's not a lot of space for things, and it makes me wonder what's gonna happen in the future. Should the neighbors there sell the property or whatever? Goes on, and then, you know, there's a possibility we're gonna go back to square one with things. It, it's just. To me, this is just way too tight to try to make what, what you wanna do happen. I'm just not, there's just not enough space here. I don't think in any way, shape or form. And like I said, it's, it's really, I'm not, today, maybe we can get by with it. But as time moves along at this point, I wouldn't make any guarantees that this won't be back before us. And, and either in a contentious mode or, you know, a problem, a problem solving mode that may have to come back before the board. So, thank you.
Thank you, Barry.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Is that Dave?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Nat, on your motion?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the chairs and I. Okay, on the merits, my friends.
Make a motion to approve with the change that Joe suggested to move the, the drive, the parking space about five feet towards Shell. Is that about right?
Uh, 10.
10, okay. And the discussion about the brush or the future vegetation to be no higher than three feet on the, I guess you'd call it the north side of the, yeah. And then widening out that corner coming in to Cottage Court a little bit. And that's it. That's my motion.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, John. Nat, on your motion?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Barry?
Nae.
Dave?
Aye.
And the chairs and I.
Did you get John?
Four to one. Yep.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good night.
Take care.
Okay, moving on to Richard Joseph Ledder.
Oh, the Sconset one.
Jane, yeah. At 62 and 64 St. Kitty Road. And the representation is Mr. Arcas Barrow.
Art's moving over now.
Okay. It won't, it won't bring up some, some reason.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to proceed?
Yes, please, Mr. Gasparo.
Uh, thank you. I'm before the board tonight with the property and project, I believe, that you're all familiar with from some, I think, extended discussion that we had in the fall through several meetings. And we had received approval for an approval required subdivision, which served as the proof plan for us to come before you tonight with this special permit application for a rear lot subdivision. And what we still agree to, as we did as part of the AR, is that two of these lots, the two lots essentially shown as lots six and seven on the plan that are being created, would be served by a single driveway access. And we agree to the various improvements to the terminal end of the, the bike path. The rest of the application, I believe, is fairly straightforward in where, you know, the overall number of lots being created is no more than could have otherwise been created. And I don't want to belabor or go back through all the same things you already discussed, but I'm more than happy to do so to the extent you would like to or to answer any, any questions that you may have concerning these, this application.
I think we're good at this moment. Thank you, Art. Commissioners, have any comments?
This has been a long road and I really appreciate all the work that's been done. Okay. With everybody.
Thank you. Anyone else? Amy, Ms. Eldridge?
Amy Eldridge, 56 St. Kitty Road, direct of butter to this property. Again, you guys all know how I feel on this, so I won't drag it out. The map that was up just a few minutes ago with all the red improvements, to me, that is the worst case scenario, you know, what we have to kind of like settle for. My hope is that it stays at 64 with one driveway. I understand turning that, making that a hard turn, putting some break between the new driveway coming out there and where the bike path actually ends. I just see it not being a, I see it being a total problem. And it's a matter of, you know, maybe leaving this alone and allowing them to make changes closer to 64. So there's only one curb cut at the bike path. I understand that this will, these changes will make it supposedly better, but I'm not sure of that. I still feel like you're going to have people coming down, making that turn, and people are going to be confused. I mean, I get it every day driving down that and I turn into Eldridge Lane. People think I'm turning into the bike path. Now you have a driveway right there, whether it makes a hard turn or not. You're going to have people who don't know that area. I mean, it's going to be a problem and it's very heavily used in the summer. And I, I feel like I'm beating the drum so much that it's just, I'm not being heard. I respect all you guys, but I just really feel like this isn't going to work. And, you know, I don't want to be that neighbor, but I just foresee that I'm going to be back here and we're going to be a neighbor problem on a public safety. And I really want the public safety of that street, that bike path to be paramount to this community and the neighbors that live there. I understand, but there's a whole risk that what the leaders want to put in. They could be selling out that entire property with new owners and they may have the same feeling that I have. I know that's putting the cart before the horse, but to me, I want to look at planning out and looking at the future. I mean, we've heard here before that this bike path, due to what was there back in the day, wasn't really lined out properly with the scope of what's happening on the street now. And I want us to have some forethought going forward because I truly believe in my heart, and I don't mean to sound like I'm going to be that neighbor, but I'm going to be back here with serious concerns on the public safety side. And I want us to take the utmost respect for, for the people that don't fully understand this situation, like the tourists that are using this facility, the, this, this bike path. You know, I just want to, I want to cover everybody for people who have never ridden that bike path and boom, there it is. To people who ride it all day long. And like I said in past meetings, I've watched people who are very familiar with that bike path, just lay right out into the street. They don't look, they don't stop, they don't do anything. This is a nightmare that's going to explode. And I want us to take very serious consideration to all these changes without knowing whether or not this is actually going to work. But I really feel like this is going to create more issues because now you're going to have two driveways within X amount of feet, making left-hand turns in and out of that driveway coming from Sconset. And possibly a little harder for them coming out. That people are going to be confused about what these cars are doing because it does look like I want to turn onto the bike path. When people are coming down, the perception. So I just want that to be utmost. It's public safety. It's not anything against the leaders. They're great people. We've had decent conversations. It is the public safety nightmare that is in that street. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Okay, we have Mike Burns. And Mike, can you weigh in on this?
Yes, Mr. Chair. We did review this plan with the Bike Pedestrian Advisory Committee. There were some positive statements on the, the redesign of the, the crossing. The, the committee did appreciate the perpendicular approach of the path. And I, I really think there was just general favorability of this reconfiguration to accommodate the, the second driveway. So I'll, I'll leave it at that. And I'll also note that this was reviewed with the DPW director. DPW director and I did review this as well and had the same sentiment that the B-PAC did as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Hello, Campbell. Welcome.
Campbell Sutton again. So I've also spoken on this. So when I'm looking at the plan that you have up there now, through you to the, to Mr. Gasparo, what's the distance between where the new turn, the perpendicular turn is for the bike path and the edge of the new driveway? What's that distance?
I'm going to ask Art, can you weigh in on that, please?
Sure, I'm, I'm estimating it at about 20 feet.
Was that 20 feet?
20 feet.
Okay, because I'm, I just want to support what Ms. Eldridge is saying because the people are not coming off the bike path and crossing the road. They're going to come off the bike path and hang a right and be in the roadway itself. So this intersection, I think, is really important to focus on. And again, not only do we have people that aren't familiar with the area, as we've all noticed, we also have people that aren't really that good at riding bikes. You know, it's something that they do because it's a fun activity, but it's not something that they do on a daily basis. And for those people, I think we need to really think about how this, how much distance you can get before that second curb cut. I obviously would, as I've stated before, support a single drive. The driveway that exists now is pretty much like a roadway, but that, I guess those are my comments. I'd like to see a little more than just 20 feet. You know, it's about two bike lengths, which is, you know, when a car is pulling out and someone's getting off the bike path into the road and the car is pulling out, there's, doesn't seem like a lot of room for maneuvering. Thank you.
Thank you, Campbell. Anyone else have any comments?
No other hands are raised online.
Okay, thank you.
Ar, Arthur Gasparo's hand is raised, but I think you're not intending for that, right?
I would like to respond whenever is good for you, Mr. Chairman.
Please, Art.
Thank, thank you. I, I appreciate the comments and, you know, do want both the neighbors and board to realize how much work, you know, we, we care about the safety of the area as well and how much work that we did put into this. I think it's important to note that there are two existing lots right now. So you essentially could have two driveways by right that would result in, you know, most likely a direct crossing of the bike path. And so by restricting one of the two lots, we're really not asking for any more driveways than would exist under, exist, under current conditions. You know, we're taking two lots and, and making three, but keeping two driveways. And so further to that, I think when you look at all of the improvements to the, and by, by placing the proposed driveway south of the bike path, you're, you're avoiding a crossing of the bike path that likely would have happened. You know, should this just remain the, the two conforming lots as, as exist. So I, I don't think that, you know, it's a big ask of the board to allow for the configuration of, and grant special permit based upon the, the driveways as, as shown. The other thing that I would just bring up is that, you know, there are significant improvements that are shown. If we, if we could go back to the, the driveway access and improvement plan, please. Thank you. You know, we're removing a fair amount of asphalt, we're adding asphalt, we're adding detectable surface warning panels that don't exist right now. We're adding a grassed area, we're relocating the crosswalk, we're adding signage. We're agreeing to cut all the vegetation down to a height of three feet within that bike path easement across all of these properties. Again, I think it represents a, a significant investment and improvement over the existing conditions, all with only creating one driveway that you would get if nothing happened with these lots anyway. So I, I, I do want you to know that we have looked closely at it and it is not being done in a way, you know, that we believe creates any, any sort of hazardous or, you know, make some, some condition worse than would otherwise be, be allowed. Thank you.
Thank you, Art. Anyone else?
Howard Matts has the same.
Howard, please go.
Hi, Howard Matts. So I'm, in the context of what Art said, I wholeheartedly agree with him. I, I ride bikes around the island a lot. And this intersection of a driveway and this bike path is not particularly unique to many other locations on the island. And I, I think if, if the improvements that Art is suggesting are completed, it makes this a little bit better crossing to get onto the road in any case. But more importantly, bike riders are not idiots. And they really do understand safety. And I, contrary to what other people are saying, they're not numbskulls and they get it. And they understand how to ride bikes on the island. And, and this request is pretty fair and pretty reasonable if the driveway is closest to the property line. Thank you.
Thank you, Howard. Anyone else? Flag of the board, do you want to close a public comment? Do you want to keep it open? Does anyone else have their hands up?
No.
Billy, I'm making a motion to close public hearing. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, John. Nat, on your motion?
Awesome. I?
John?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, okay, on the merits, my friends.
Make a motion to approve the common driveway and all the changes that Art has laid out in the findings. One and two, and the conditions.
Do I have a second?
One through four.
And do we need to unmute?
I'll second it.
Who was that? Dave?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Nat, on your motion?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Barry?
Nae.
And I'm an aye. That passes three to two.
Hold on, correction. That's a special permit.
Oh, that does not pass. Yep.
All right, John and Sylvia. The old days.
Stop that.
Barry, do you want to reconsider?
No, I don't.
Okay, I will reconsider it.
So we need to have a motion for reconsideration?
Yeah, that was my next comment. Okay.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, Nat?
Aye.
John, Dave?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
And are you voting in favor?
I'm voting for reconsider, I'm voting in favor for allowing the board to reconsider. That's all.
Thank you. Reconsider vote. Thank you. Okay.
Back to my motion.
Yeah, thank you.
To approve with the findings and conditions and the, all the changes that Art laid out.
Okay, can I get a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, John. Nat, on your motion?
Aye.
John, on your motion?
Aye.
Barry, any motion?
Nae.
Dave, any motion?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay. Thank you, everyone. Okay, moving on to 40 OSRLLC, 2A and 2B Forest Ave. Art Gasparo and Arthur Reed.
And I'm moving Arthur Reed over right now.
He's still in this place.
Good evening. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, welcome, Arthur.
Thank you very much. I represent the applicant in this matter, 40 OSRLLC. Thank you very much. I represent the applicant in this matter, 40 OSRLC. These lots off Old South Road on Forest Avenue, which have been before you previously, if you recall, is an existing approval for a previously proposed project on this site, which would consist of a restaurant with also apartments, which would have had approximately the same density of residential use as we're now showing here. We're proposing to drop that proposal and replace it with this, which will involve what technically is an apartment house project, even though what they actually are is our six separate two-bedroom dwellings, each constituting apartments in an apartment house, the way the bylaw is written. And it's at the level of intensity, which is permitted in this district for an apartment house. The project will require one parking space per bedroom under the bylaw. We're actually proposing to provide 23 spaces, recognizing the fact that additional amount of parking is needed. Six of those spaces will be within garage bays and another eight of them will be stacked spaces. But in any event, we're providing 23 spaces for 12 bedrooms. I think that's basically it in terms of the proposal. As the staff report comments, we meet all the standards for the issuance of a special permit for an apartment house. And Art and I would be happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Okay. Hey Arthur, can I just add one comment to you, Arthur Reed?
Sure.
When you started speaking, you were much louder and then you got softer.
Boy, I.
I don't know if you moved away from the mic or moved or.
I don't, I don't think so, but I'll try to shout it out as best I can from here on out.
I know sitting next to you, I'm sure you sounded the same, but sitting where I'm sitting, so just FYI. Thank you.
Okay, if there's anything that you think you missed from anything that I said, please let me know and I can repeat and reiterate everyone's content.
No, all good. Just makes it sound like he's giving us a whisper, a secret. Any comments from the board members? Or any question for Mr. Reed? Okay, not hearing any, any public comments? Assembly member?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Emily Molden for the Nantucket Land and Water Council. I did have a couple of questions about this and I understand that it's, this is not a proposed commercial development, so I presume that maybe that's why there's not town engineering review. But I did have a couple of questions that pertain to stormwater management on the site because it is within the Zone 2 Wellhead Protection District. And there is a standard in there that I think needs to be addressed, regardless of whether it's commercial or residential. And this is similar to one that I've brought up to you before, just in recent history. And it's under 13912G, which is for the Wellhead Recharge District. And it's under the prohibited uses, I think it's 2Q. And this is that standard or that provision that, it says, "All land uses, buildings, and accessory structures that result in rendering impervious more than 15% or 2,500 square feet of any lot, whichever is greater", basically is prohibited unless there's demonstration that the stormwater system will recharge 95% of annual precipitation and that it will not result in the degradation of groundwater quality. And I don't know that if this is a standard that the board has discussed much in the past, but I think it's really important to consider this and pay more attention to it in the Zone 2. And again, I guess I would ask, particularly if the town's consulting engineer is not going to be reviewing this one, if it's something that the applicant can be asked to provide additional information on. And I also would, just to confirm, I think that because this is in the Zone 2, I imagine that the Water Commission and Water Department would still be asked to comment on this as far as water quality compliance, because they may also be able to comment on this. Thank you.
Thank you Emily. Art Gosparo, would you like to?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We would indeed be preparing a stormwater drainage plan for review by Wanta Comment for the issuance of a water quality certificate. And I believe that's a standard condition that the board often, you know, includes in its decision. And as part of that, we would look towards addressing 13912GQ and submitting that to Mr. Willett for his review and issuance of a certificate of water quality. And I presume that the board may, in its decision, require that that be done prior to the issuance of any building permits, which we would of course be amenable to.
Thank you, Art. And I think we have Deborah Holgate online. Good evening Debbie.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Deb Holgate and my husband Chris, who is the legal owner of Three Forest across the street from this property. We have a couple of questions and concerns. One is similar to what was just brought up, that there's absolutely no green space shown on the plan that is currently before you. It looks as though there are four trees planted on the corners of the properties. Number two, it just came to our attention that this property is on the market and it's being marketed as having the ability of building eight units, including 16 bedrooms.
16?
And we are curious as to, if you approve this plan, how does that affect what they are apparently trying to sell it for? And that's a huge density and parking issue.
So if, I would say that if they are going to change that or try and sell that or if there's any change to this application, they'll have to come back to us.
Okay, it is, it is on the market currently by the Maury people.
And I think that right now they're doing it due diligence. Am I wrong in that, either of the arts?
Mr. Chairman, I'll defer to Mr. Reed on those comments, but if I could, just on the open space and the trees, we've proposed, you know, six deciduous trees to try to sort of, you know, break it up and I think be an improvement. And essentially, any of the area that's not shown in magenta, which is the driveway area, or in red, which is the structure area, is essentially, you know, grassed areas around the buildings. So while we didn't, you know, color the plan green through those areas, those will essentially all be, you know, anything that's outside of the magenta driveways or the red buildings is essentially grassed area.
Can you tell us what the, what appear to be stairways on each of the buildings? Are those access to the basement?
Through you, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
Yes, that's correct. Except on the two center buildings, those are accesses to the second story.
Okay, that's what we thought. So even though, so the basement's only way of access would be through those stairs and not through the units themselves?
I don't know how the, through you, Mr. Chairman, I don't know how the, you know, if there would also be stairs inside or also outside. I don't know the answer to that.
The other questions are, is that on the posting for this, I believe the planning board had asked about the idea of them being available for year-round. Is that something that's in the purview of the planning board? It's in your comments section that was posted a couple of days ago.
Megan, do you want to answer that?
Mr. Chair. Sure, so I, I think that legally requiring that at this stage before, you know, the regulations of the seasonal communities has fully been flushed out may exceed the scope of your authority. That said, you know, staff felt it was a point that was worth a discussion if the applicant perhaps would voluntarily place a restriction to year-round or peak seasonal occupancy.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
I was gonna ask the applicant if he'd be willing to restrict it to no short-term rentals.
That, I was about to raise my hand and say, that's exactly what we would be proposing. We do not propose to have short-term rentals and are happy to have a condition that prohibits short-term rentals. That's, as far as we want to go on that. As far as the property being on the market, that's irrelevant. And obviously, you know, I know of no proposal, no idea of having 16 units on the site. I'm not sure exactly how we would go about getting permission to do that, but we certainly couldn't do it under this application. And if we were trying to do a different proposal, we wouldn't be coming before you tonight with this one. So this, what you see is what you get. There was a more intense project involving the commercial use on this property under the prior application. And that's not our present plan as far as dealing with the property, although it's still a valid, outstanding special permit. Our present intention with the property is what you're looking at right here. That's, that's the answer as far as that's concerned.
Thank you Arthur. Anyone else online?
No other hands are raised online.
It's me again.
Hello Campbell.
So one thing I wanted to say is I really appreciate the amount of parking that's being provided here. I think it's excellent. So I had a couple other questions. Is this situation, would this warrant a management, apartment management plan at all? Right, given that the number of units on each one? And it's all under one ownership, so I was thinking something like that might be appropriate. And is it possible to restrict basements to what is written in the application, which is for storage and utilities? Versus turning them into basements, into apartments? I'm thinking that's where they would get the extra bedrooms, right?
Yeah, but if they change that from wrong, they would have to come back and go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna say, any expansion to this would require, you know, any change to this layout would require some form of a modification to this.
Yeah, that was my understanding.
If I may, as far as that's concerned, I think there's an obvious answer to this. First of all, we are maximizing the number of units on this that we can have under the apartment house section of the bylaw. We can't have any more bedrooms on the site, or apartments on the site, under the apartment house provision. Now, we could go back to there being apartments rather than apartment house and we could have the same intensity of apartments with no limitation on the number of bedrooms. Technically, obviously, we'd run into a point where it'd be unfeasible and we'd have parking compliance issues. But that would be in the context of there being a commercial use on the site. So the odd thing is that the way the bylaw is written, we could have a much more intense residential use on the site if we also provided commercial use on the site. We're backing away from that at the present time. The present proposal is entirely residential and as such, it's maxed out. So there's no possibility under the bylaw, as it exists, of there being any more units or any more bedrooms on the site than what we're proposing right here.
Super. Thank you.
Thank you Arthur. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair?
Deborah Holgate has her hand raised again, and Dave as well.
Dave, hold on a minute, we're gonna go to Mrs. Holgate.
Yep.
Debbie?
I'm muted. One other comment or question that we have is, and this was a previous concern as well, can this approval be conditioned upon no on-street parking? Because theoretically, there may or may not be enough parking spaces for everybody residing there.
I could, yeah, I don't see that's a problem, but I mean, it's 12 bedrooms, one space, there's 12 parking spaces, but they're providing 23, so.
I understand, but if you put two.
And then there's also, I'm counting six interior parking spaces, so.
I think there's a total of 23 proposed parking spaces, yes.
Yeah, so, and then, I mean, there's also a sidewalk, so, you know, I think that some signage from the town would take care of that as well.
Okay, again, just wanted on the record that we're concerned about parking on the street.
No, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Flag of the board?
Mr. Chair, I just, I had a question.
Oh, sorry Dave, sorry.
No, it's fine. So, um, the garages, are they gonna be rented separately from the apartments?
No.
So they're gonna be rented with the apartments?
They're entirely for the use of the residents on the site.
So they won't, they won't be rented separately?
No, they will not, they will not be rented as apartment spaces per se.
Okay, great. Thank you Arthur. I would like just to add that to the conditions if we could.
Sure. So how many conditions do we have? I got the management plan, signage on the street, apartments tied to the shop space. Did you say something earlier? I can't remember what you said. Oh, the, you talked about the water quality, you know, review for Wanta Comment, and what about fire? I mean, I hate to bring any of these things up, but that's part of it too. And the homeowners association or management plan of some kind, does that go together in a case like this?
It won't be a homeowners association because the property isn't being divided into separate.
So there would be some kind of management, property management plan of some sort then for that, Arthur, right? Have to be. Somebody, somebody's in charge of this project, you know, as far as when it's finished.
Yeah, I mean, it's, the concept here is that it is a single project, a single, a single, there are two lots here that are in common ownership.
Right, but I'm just saying, there has to be some, you know, something for managing, some kind of a condition for that.
Can I make a suggestion, just similar language that you used out in that development, Candlewick Corner by the airport, that, you know, you need to supply the management plan for the rentals, but in the event they were to be condo-ed and conveyed out of common ownership, it would have to come to the planning board, there would need to be an HOA, just so that if that were to ever happen, yours down the road with a future owner, that would already be addressed.
Okay, you talking about Hannabia?
No, Candlewick Corner, like where the Thai House is? Yep. Hannabia's different, yep.
Either way.
What it would be for a condo, it would have to be a provision that the master deed or operative documents of the management of the condominium would have to contain provisions as far as the management of. of the uh, common facilities that would address all of us.
And Mr. Chair, Mike Burns has his hand raised as well.
Welcome, Mike Burns.
Good evening. Uh, two points, uh, Mr. Chair, and I, I guess it's directed to Argus Baro. Um, the, one is the, uh, the, the, the parking spaces uh, on, on the uh, uh, it looks like they're stacked parking spaces that are next to some of the buildings. So, I assume that those stacked spaces will be used for guests and could be available to assist with some turning maneuvers to get in and out of the lot. I think that'd be a lot easier if, uh, those were available for that. Otherwise, I think it'd be a little tough to get in and out of the, the circulation area. So, I just asked him to comment on that. The second part is, I believe, and I might have to wipe the egg on my face after this, but I believe Forest Avenue is private and wouldn't be able to have signage and enforceable on-street parking. Uh, that might have changed, but my notes say it's private.
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
Um, so, yes, the um, uh, the par, stacked parking areas, all the parking spaces are gonna be assigned to the units. And so, um, that's gonna be, I think, how, how that works. Um, you know, obviously, that if you have either a guest that's at your own place and they're blocking you in, then it's gotta be um, uh, associated with that individual unit. I believe all of the uh, we, we've tried to leave room on, for the turn and movement of um, the uh, spaces on the, uh, if you will, the back. Um, that's why I pushed that last parking space sort of took back a little bit further. So, there's a little place to back into, to pull back out. I think all the other spaces would pull into, you know, the driveway is fairly wide between the two garage buildings. And the other thing I wanted to mention is that there would be, in case you wanted to, there'd be no outside storage allowed. Um, you know, on, on this property as well. Um, and we've taken the time also to be sure to show, you know, the trash receptacle bins uh, for, I didn't mention that, it didn't come up in the initial. It might seem like a small thing, but I wanted you to, you know, know the level of thought that we sort of put into how, how that would operate um, a, as well. And it is important that there's not outside storage, you know, here of um, uh, materials.
Thank you, Arthur.
And Mr. Chair, the other private ownership of uh, Forest Avenue?
Private ownership, yes, I, I concur. Sorry, through you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Um, anyone else?
No other hands are raised online.
Thank you. All right, board members, what's your pleasure? Megan, can I just get you for a second here? If we approve this tonight, we've gotta make sure that all the things that we've discussed get handled by staff.
Yep, absolutely.
In this particular case, you know, um, I, I have no issue with that. I just wanna make sure that everyone understands that, that that staff can deal with all the, the conditions that we've added. The water qua, the wanna comment in the fire department and whatever the other things were. Apartments connected with the shop space. Yep.
So, I'd recommend conditioning the review from the fire department, the um, wanna comment water certificate of compliance in connection with a building permit. I would recommend submission to the, of the uh, management plant, just management plan for staff's review prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy.
Yeah, what about landscaping? Is that necessary? Not really. I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there, one more thing.
That, I mean, it's within your purview, so it, it's what you guys all think.
I think that just more definitive as far as some of that stuff goes would be good. But I definitely think staff can deal with that. I just think that, um, you know, it'll, it'll be more, more do, do definitive. Um, this part around the buildings and stuff like that, making it so that we know where the, where the grass is gonna be and stuff. It's thirty-one percent that, of ground cover, so that's to be noted to, to uh, the whole gates. It's not the full forty percent.
That, or Mr. Chair?
Is that correct, Art?
It is.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I don't mean to interrupt now, but uh, either we ask for a land plate, a, a landscape plan or we don't. I, we can't be wishy-washy about this. Like, do, do we want one? I think we do. Oh. And can we trust staff? One hundred percent, but I think we need to say it definitively.
Yes, we, we agreed not just admitted to do that.
Okay.
Just, I'm just trying to make sure that all these things are covered if we can, if we don't continue.
I get it. And, and the no STRs add on to that list.
Right, right. Yep.
And no, and no separate rentals of the garage units.
Correct. Dave, can you repeat that?
No separate rental of the garage units.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, it's a good policy. Yeah. Okay, what's the pleasure of the board? Make a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, John. Nat, on your motion?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
And the chairs and I. Okay, on the merits, my friends. Make a motion to approve with the conditions in the staff report, but with the, all the conditions that we mentioned, Megan, and the um, thought about the issuance of a building permit, having those having the um, fire department and the water company piece for that. And the other conditions that we talked about through staff. And Dave's STR. Yep. That's my motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
Sorry, it was uh?
It was me.
Thank you, Dave. Yeah, guys, I don't know if it's me, but I'm not hearing you well.
I might not be speaking.
Thank you.
I apologize.
Maybe everyone's getting sleepy. Uh, Nat, on your motion?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
And I, chairs and I. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Arthur. Yeah, okay, moving on to one eleven OSR LLC. One eleven B Old South Road and Mr. Bresher is here in person.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mr. Chair. Uh, for the record, it's Trinny John Bresher, uh, representing the owner applicant one eleven OSR LLC. Um, I believe, oh, I'm not, I think Don Bracken is on as well. Um, if he is, he's here to answer whatever engineering questions we may have. Um, so, uh, very quickly, what we have before you is a uh, request for major commercial development permit, special permit. Uh, specifically, it is going to be a mixed-use structure with contractor shops and office space as well as two second-floor apartments. Um, we meet the dimensional zoning requirements as well as all the parking requirements. Uh, we do not meet the twenty percent open space requirement for the MCD. Um, and we're also requesting a special permit for the two curb cuts and a waiver of the exterior lighting plan and a plan for all exterior signs. Uh, otherwise, it's uh, sort of a, I don't wanna say fairly innocuous, but it's a relatively minor uh, major commercial development. It, it's triggered by the um, amount of storage space in the basement as well. And uh, we did receive uh, Mr. Pesky's engineering report, uh, and I know Don has looked through that. And I don't think there are, uh, we have any issues with um, complying with all of his uh, comments and requests.
Thank you, John. John, do you have anything? Don Bracken, do you have anything to add?
Uh, yeah, I can just give a, a quick presentation on some of the technical aspects. Um, as John said, we're taking access off of a private way. This was a way that was created back around nineteen fifty-five. You know, we looked at different options, well, you know, coming in off Old South Road as, as well, but obviously, uh, this is the better choice. Um, the site is also, and the use of the building is very conducive to have, um, you know, two entry points on that private road. As you can see, the front of the building, uh, that use is gonna be the office space. The back of the building to the south, uh, garage doors, and that's uh, shop space. Um, so the circulation works well. We're also proposing that shed that's there. Um, we exceed the number of parking spaces that are required. Um, this particular parking lot is gonna be a uh, concrete parking lot similar to what we just constructed at Arrowhead Drive. Uh, we are in the zone two in this case, and we do comply with the bylaw that was previously discussed. All of the runoff uh, will be treated with uh, catch basins, uh, what they call storm septic treatment systems, and then infiltrated in, in, into the ground. Uh, you may recall back to uh, this past fall, there's an MCD on the other side of this private way uh, that was approved along with some roadway improvements. Uh, this plan reflects those uh, roadway improvements along with uh, some minor changes uh, to it that Mr. Pesky was, was aware of. Um, we did include uh, hydrology calculations and certifications that meet the Stormwater Management Act. We know also that we need a water quality certificate prior to the issuance of a, of a building permit. Um, and with that, it is, it's gonna be serviced by town sewer and town water, obviously. I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioners, any comments?
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Chair.
Uh, go ahead, Dave.
Through you. Um, so, this is, this is basically a clean piece of land. So, I, I just, I wanna understand why we need a waiver on where, uh, first of all, I wanna understand where you are with open space and then why you need a waiver when you're starting from scratch and you're in the um, wellhead recharge district. For Don, if he could, please.
Yeah, the, the open space is at sixteen percent, so, well, almost sixteen percent. So, we're asking for roughly a four percent waiver. Um, and I, I think given, you know, the uh, past practices, I think, you know, uh, based on having a good landscaping plan, um, in, in general, the, the, the board has, has granted that waiver. Um, if we likely could meet that by reducing the parking, um, we're still over, I think, by four spaces, but obviously, parking is always gonna be an issue, and we're trying to get as much parking on the site as we can.
Okay, thank you, Don.
Yep.
Anyone else? Commissioners, anyone online?
No, no. Uh, hang on one second. Mike Burns has his hand raised.
Good evening to Mike.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, and uh, this might be to other staff or to uh, Mr. Bresher. Uh, the traffic study uh, situation for this property, um, I know was, was being discussed recently with, amongst staff, and I didn't know if that was rectified. The concern was, there's been a lot of development in this area. I think uh, uh, as its own parcel, it's, it's, uh, as Mr. Bresher represented, uh, it's a rather minor uh, commercial development, but in the area of, of this new private way, there's been a lot of development. I think collectively, it's, it's not necessarily all that minor. Uh, we don't have a lot of information about trip, trip generation and whatnot, or exploring other options for maybe crosswalk opportunities for Old South Road to get to the bike path, or maybe sidewalk connections on the south side of Old South Road to Airport Road, those kind of discussions. I, I didn't know where that situation stood, or if that's part of the uh, uh, waivers that's being requested for this property, but it's just a general concern. I don't necessarily know if I have a solution to propose for addressing this, but just a concern that we, we uh, caught in uh, uh, revealing this parcel and then the area that it's in. Thank you.
Deborah, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, through you, uh, we've discussed it a little bit with staff, and I think, I think Burns makes an excellent point that on its own, it may not generate one or have the need for one, but taking as a whole as this, this area, uh, there is a lot more interest with the uh, or a lot more activity with the um, property behind it as well. And uh, Meg and I had a discussion today about one of the others, sort of the, the apron aspect. And I, I think the, the short answer is, we're, I think we'd be willing to work with the town to, and perhaps the other homeowners, to try to uh, solve, solve whatever, whatever traffic considerations there may be, um, given that there is such an increase in activity amongst the neighborhood. So, it's, I mean, it's sort of like a, a large commercial subdivision, but with all separate owners. So, I, we, we can certainly try to work together with them to, to solve the problems.
Yeah, that'd be great, 'cause, yeah, that'd be awesome. Uh, anyone else have any comments? Yeah, anyone else? Emily, good evening.
Hello, thank you, Mr. Chair. Emily Molden, Antiquet, Land and Water Council. Um, a couple of questions. First of all, um, I don't believe that the uh, town engineer's review was maybe available in time to make the packet. So, as um, one member of the public, I certainly would appreciate an opportunity to see that and review that while the um, public hearing is still open. And then, so I guess my request would be that if it's possible to wait and not close this until there's an opportunity to see that review. Um, I also would echo concern around the proposed waiver for the open space. Um, despite past practice, I think considering that this is uh, sort of a clean slate of a lot, that it seems prudent, again, being in the zone two, that the board try to maintain that. And um, it seems like there should at least be some demonstration of why that's not feasible. It sounds like maybe they could meet it with a little bit of um, a few changes. And then also, again, despite press practice, I just would draw the board's attention back to that same provision under the wellhead recharge district. Um, and I mean, I presume, I'm sure that this would also be going to Wanna Comment Water Company for a review. I think that um, it's important to ask applicants to um, provide some justification for how they meet the standard uh, for recharge and for not degrading groundwater quality. There is a specific provision under Q that I already read, um, Q one, which actually states that for non-residential uses, recharge shall be by open stormwater infiltration basins or similar system covered with natural vegetation, and subsurface infiltration shall be used only where other methods are infusible. And again, this is all about trying to provide pretreatment for stormwater before it actually goes into the ground, and it is in the zoning bylaw. Even though we may not have been talking about this much on past projects, I think that as the zone two becomes increasingly developed, again, thinking about these things in the aggregate, similar to the comments that um, you heard from Mr. Burns about traffic in this area, it's something we really need to be paying attention to. So, I think the board should be looking for applicants to provide um, documentation on how they're meeting these standards, and if they're not feasible, then some actual uh, more information on how and why they're not feasible. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Uh, anyone else? Okay. Pleasure the board. Thoughts, comments? I agree uh, with Emily's point about continuing to get Pesky's review and um, that's sort of a clearer picture as to what, I mean, I have to, these unnamed ways, I'm unfamiliar with some of this stuff, for whatever reason, I just am. So, I need to get a clearer picture of this. And the conditions that we, the uh, road infrastructure improvements that we did on the previous one fifteen to one seventeen, I wanna get a little more clarification on that as far as like adding to that for this or not, or whatever that consisted of. I'm not concerned about the open space part as much as I am about just the overall, you know, Pesky report. You know, each zoning district isn't perfect. And we put this in CTEC for a reason, because this end of the, of the, you know, Goakie property, we felt- Goaki property, we felt needed to be in, you know, in light commercial, so. The, is uh Dan, Dawn on there? Dawn, are you on right now?
Yes.
Still?
Yes.
Sorry.
Yeah.
This is like last meeting, like some people aren't, some people aren't. The parking, all the parking area are going to be cement, like everything, or is there going to be some of that? You know, those blocks with the holes or whatever we call those things, or anything like that?
No, it's all going to be concrete. Yep.
Okay, no brick, no like paper bricks or anything that can drain a little bit?
No, the, what's difficult about that is because we do have to treat all the runoff.
Yep.
You know, that doesn't always qualify as treatment.
Right, I got you. We've tried this before. I know it has, it's some positive and some negative. Okay.
Exactly.
All right. That's all I have. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Any other board members? Any comments want to weigh in?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Um, I I'm gonna respectfully disagree with my friend Nat. Um, I I do have a problem with with the open space and and I and I know we've given it, given waivers, and that's not, that's not an inaccurate statement by by Don, but um, this is a fresh piece of dirt. It it is in the wellhead recharge district, and and I think that we really need to hold to to the bylaw on this. And and uh, you know, what's more important, parking spaces or green space? I would argue in this area in the well recharge district, the green space is more important. And and, you know, typically, I'm a a problem with parking as well, but here I would, I'd really like to see you come uh within the parameters of the bylaw. So other than that, I'm I'm good with everything else. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Barry, do you want to add something, or do you just?
No, I I have to concur with Dave.
Okay.
And I think Nat was right to hold this for another month would probably, now given the discussions we've had, would would be appropriate.
Okay.
We um, we can also have the engineering review, but now it's going to have to uh meet what we're asking for. It's going to have to be torqued a little bit, too, so.
Perfect, thank you. I just wanted to make sure you weren't.
And I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Hi, Campbell.
Hi.
Welcome.
Uh, Campbellson, I I wanted to um stand behind what Dave said on the um green space. We have to remember that there's going to be two two-bedroom apartments in this area as well. And as I've said in the past, I think it's really important for people to be able to have a seat outside or a picnic table or what have you. And with pure concrete all the way around, uh, it doesn't sound like that's going to happen. But again, it's also residential as well as the commercial. Thank you.
Thank you, Campbell. Okay, I I think you understand where we're at.
Yes, sir. Well, uh, we're ha- happy to continue a month, and we'll get uh, we'll look into this and get back to you with comments for the next meeting.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you, John.
So I'll make a motion at this point that we continue to February tenth, I believe it is.
Thank you, Barry.
Second.
Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Uh, Dave?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the acting chair is an aye. Okay.
Looing yourself, you're fooling.
Trying to keep it light, Dave. Um, facility, Lantowski, seventy-five Upright Farm Road. And we have Mike Connolly.
I don't see Mike on there, but I can, I can honestly run through this.
Yeah, if you want to take a run out.
Yeah, I mean, it's, this isn't a overly confusing uh application. Just give me a moment.
Yep, not a problem. Why don't we do a real lot here?
So this is an AR subdivision with the intent to move to a rear lot.
Good.
Um, this is the the AR plan that's in front of you now, and just give me one second. I gotta just.
This is on the dirt path, right? Down ways on the left. Got to be. Yeah, she's closer toward the end of Gray Avenue.
Yep.
Sure side group.
Yeah, so he did, uh, Mr. Connolly did, there we go, include a basically what's intended. And I'd I'd included that on, you know, it's on the page following the the AR subdivision.
Yep.
But it's it's fairly self-explanatory. They have the roadway lot here in what I believe he meant to label as Lot A and B, because it it follows on the uh, on the rear lot.
Yep.
Sort of concept plan, if you will.
Yep. Okay. All right, um, commissioners, any comments? Okay, uh, anyone in the public? And, okay, move.
Close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Second.
Uh, I believe that was Dave.
Yep.
Uh, Dave, on your motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the chair is an aye. Okay. Dave, you want to keep going?
Um, I would make a motion to um make a finding that it was in harmony and um add in the conditions from staff and approve it. Be my motion.
Okay.
Oh, Barry?
Yeah, I'll I'll second it. There's just one thing we need to clarify at this point if we already haven't, which is um item seven. The monetary contribution, we just staff to give us a number on that. So Megan, Billy and our mom.
Do you, do you recall what we've done recently with those? I think it's
I think it's two thousand per lot.
Thousand per lot?
How much is it? Two thousand?
I think it's two thousand per lot, but we, when we draft it, we'll make sure it's consistent with, you know, very recent past decisions. Um, but I feel like it's two thousand per lot.
That sounds about right, yeah.
They'll be back to us anyway next month, right?
Yes, yeah, to convert to a real lot.
Okay. Okay, perfect.
Good.
All right, so uh Dave made the motion, Barry seconded, is that right?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, thank you. Dave, any motion?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay. Onto other business.
Hmm.
Hmm. Drafts, zoning articles. Who wants to lead this one? Anyone?
That, this, this might be a carryover from a past staff report, but
I think it is.
We don't intend to go over any articles today. Um, but that said, you'll notice there are some additional meetings I've had to add to the schedule just based on the sheer amount of articles that have been drafted. I know we've said we were going to try and keep it light this year, but the Affordable Homes Act had other plans in mind, so um that translates to to more meetings. So we will be meeting next on the twenty-third for a large chunk of the planning board sponsored articles. The thirtieth for two planning board sponsored articles and all of the continued citizen articles, and then February sixth for any carryover, another chunk of the planning board sponsored articles, and then motions and um comments will need to be finalized on March sixth.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the warrant is going to be adopted by the select board on the twenty-second. Leslie and I actually are going to be presenting about some concepts to them on their meeting this week. Um, specifically, they wanted more information on the cottage communities by law. Um, so we will see you, I guess, on the twenty-third.
Good, that's perfect. Thank you. That um, I was wondering about the draft zoning, because I don't remember any date specific that was mentioned, so thank you. Nat, you have a comment?
No.
No?
No, believe it or not.
Acting chair.
Okay, let me write that one down. Uh, any other comments? Otherwise, motion to adjourn.
Yeah, this, Mr. Acting Chair at this point.
Don't encourage him, guys.
Too late, too late. Cat's coming out of the bag. No, I just wanted to say, look at the time right now. That's very impressive.
See, that's what I'm saying. He shame.
Of course, that doesn't mean that Dave gets to get out of it. It just means he's got, he's got a track record now that that's established here.
I see it as Dave wasn't here, so there's a lot of continuances.
Mr. Chair, four items were continued.
You, you, you had thought, you had thought about that before you even got through the door.
No, no, that was right out the cuff. I swear to God.
Anyways.
All right, always a pleasure.
Motion to adjourn, sir.
Okay, okay. Uh, Barry, on your motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
And Dave?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And Mr. Chair and I. Thank you to all of the planning board members, alts, et cetera, and plus staff. Thank you for your excellent work. Good night, everyone.
Get on.
Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
You, too.
Good well.
I know.